Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So again, good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over Lunberg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page. And will be uploaded to the Lunberg Public Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Some items listed may be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. So for this evening, do we have any public comments tonight from the Board?
Yeah, I just wanted to wish Mr. Dwyer a happy birthday. It is his birthday today and I was told to embarrass him.
Okay.
I'm embarrassed, it's my birthday. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mr. Dwyer.
Thanks.
Look, he's so thrilled.
I am.
All right.
Doing a happy dance on the inside.
Do you have any other board comments this evening from the Board?
No.
Any public comments?
I was waiting to acknowledge. I want to thank everybody who came out to the Candlelight vigil on Friday evening. We gathered around 100 people were there for this, for the event. And it was recorded by PAC TV, so it is now available, being played on the Channel 8 locally on cable TV and also on the PAC Lunberg Access YouTube channel. I guess we had about 85 people sign the resolution. That resolution, if people who didn't make it would like or interested in potentially signing it, is going to be at Town Hall and Library for a week or so. So I encourage people to look at that who are interested. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? I do not have any public comments. Do we have any public comments from the public this evening?
I see one.
Mr. Passios.
Yes, thank you. First of all, this is the first Select Board meeting that I believe I've commented on since Heather was elected to the Board. Welcome to the Board, Heather. Our interactions on the Finance Committee a couple of years ago were very valuable and your contribution to the Finance Committee was well appreciated then and I expect great things while you're seated in this seat on this committee. On an agenda item you have coming up this evening for reappointments, annual reappointments, I figured I'd make a comment now because it's usually not appropriate for the general public to ask questions during an appointment hearing, if you want to call it that. And that is, I've got a question as to the way the APDC Richard McGrath appointment is worded in that I'm assuming that you are appointing him to the Historical Commission and then the Historical Commission will in turn decide whether he continues to be the representative to the APDC or vice versa. It's a little confusing as to the way that's listed. And I don't need an explanation now if you want to wait till the appointment or whichever. Thank you. That's it for tonight for me.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. You know, the short answer to that is it is an APDC appointment and from the APDC, he is currently the Historical Commission Representative from the APDC, but that is up to the APDC to decide who, which of their members is their representative on the Historical Commission.
No, I think you have that reversed. Yes, you have that reversed.
That's what he was saying, it's reversed. He's on the Historical Committee.
I haven't seen the composition in a while of the APDC and how those get appointed, but we appoint people to the Historical Commission. And if there's a representative from the Historical Commission to be on the APDC, it's up to the Historical Commission to appoint.
Oh, and his talent for him, well, he's not there yet, but...
So based on the vacancies, tonight's appointment is to the APDC for Mr. McGrath. It is for, we have two vacancies and he's looking for one of them.
So is he no longer on the Historical Committee, Commission?
He is. He's on the Historical Commission as a representative from the APDC.
Is the APDC, I'm sure they're online here, so we'll look at it. I'm assuming the Town Manager is looking at that. All right.
Yep. We'll come back to that.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments this evening? No? All right. For announcements, this is somewhat of an announcement. Just to reflect that this afternoon at 12:00, there was a 55th year anniversary of the Council of Aging at the Senior Center. There was some good information that I learned, which is that our Council of Aging is older. It predates Massachusetts requiring the Council of Aging to exist. So we apparently were a frontrunner in that one by almost, I think, I think what was noted was about eight years prior to it being required. So that's a pretty cool tidbit. And then the other thing to announce is going to be mentioned later this evening, but just to remind everyone that this Thursday at the 16th, from 5:30 to 7:00 is a volunteer appreciation reception and that will be held at the Eagle House Senior Center.
So our senior center is the seniors among senior centers.
Yes.
I like it.
And any other announcements to the Town Manager?
None at this time.
Okay. All right. Communications from other Boards and Committees. We did receive one and from the Parks Commissioners and this came in from the Chair of the Parks Commission. And the comments tonight were really just noting that some of this is administrative and have been already relayed to the Town Manager that they're looking at the beach should be opening this Saturday, the 18th. Beach passes were expected on June the 1st, but they have not been issued as of yet. And there seems to be a little bit more work that needs to get done at the beach to get it prepared for the opening this weekend. And we also had a request from the Parks Commissioners requesting a meeting with the Select Board to provide an update on Marshall Park. So we provided them with a couple of dates and they're going to have their meeting and get back to us on which dates will work best for them. All right. Any other communications from any other Boards, Committees in town? No? Okay. Time for some appointments this evening. So our first appointment tonight, 7:15, is a fiscal year 21 audit review by Powers &amp; Sullivan. We're a little bit ahead scheduled on this, but I see the representatives from Powers &amp; Sullivan in attendance tonight, so please come forward.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. Ben Adsett is also with me. Ben is the Supervisor on the Engagement and responsible for coordinating a lot of the work with the Town and the information that we need and supervising the staff assigned to the Engagement. We appreciate the opportunity to be here to present the results of the Fiscal 2021 Audit. I'd like to start off by thanking the Town Manager, the Finance Director, Treasurer Collector, the School Business Office and the rest of the Finance Team for all the cooperation and assistance that we received during the course of the audit. Everybody was really great in terms of getting us the information that we needed and answering our questions. We didn't have any issues with any of that at all. From our standpoint, we thought it went very well. From a timing standpoint, we completed our preliminary work in early June. We were back out for our year-end audit work in mid-October. For the preliminary work, we're usually focusing on the audit of the federal awards, the audit of the budget. We're auditing debt and really trying to do as much as we can before the year-end work, just to get as much of a head start as we can. That went really well. Then we were back out for our year-end fieldwork. At that time, we're wrapping up any loose ends we might have had from our preliminary work. We're also completing all of our year-end audit procedures and then we're helping to like compile and put the reports together. Part of what we do every year with the audit is we test a whole series of transactions and all the different transaction cycles. We look at revenues, expenditures like vendor payments, payroll, journal entries, probably about 30 different transactions in each of those cycles. We request supporting documentation and we review the documentation to make sure that things have been properly approved, they've been charged to the proper accounts and that there's adequate supporting documentation. We didn't find any issues with any of that testing that we did, no concerns. And everything was being processed in accordance with your policies and procedures. We also take a close look at the reconciliations for cash and receivables. Those are two of your biggest assets that are pretty high risk and so you always want to make sure that you have good reconciliation procedures in place. We found that the receivables are being reconciled every month. There were no like outstanding reconciling items or any issues noted in those reconciliations, so that's a very important control to have in place and it was functioning the way you would expect it to. Also with the cash reconciliations, you would want to see that cash is being reconciled every month and that's what we found. And then we also verify all the reconciling items on the cash reconciliation and we were able to do that. All the reconciliations were verified and we found the reconciliations to be complete and accurate. So from an auditor's standpoint, you know, those two things are extremely important. If that stuff is happening on a timely basis, then the audit usually goes smoothly from there. If those things aren't happening, then you tend to see, you know, other issues with the other areas that you get into. From an overall results standpoint, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's the best you can get. Means the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The reporting deadlines were met. The information that we received was accurate. And we didn't note any internal control deficiencies such as significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. And if we did, you would have known about it a lot sooner than today. Those are things that we're required to bring to your attention, you know, when we discover them. But it's important to know that nothing like that was highlighted during the audit. From a financial highlights standpoint, the Town maintained its AA+ credit rating, which is great. The general fund fund balance totaled $9.2 million. Of that, $181,000 is restricted for debt service. $317,000 is assigned for year-end encumbrances. $1.5 million is assigned for subsequent year expenditures, so that's free cash that you voted to fund the '22 budget. That left you with general fund unassigned fund balance of $7.2 million, which is about 16% of your budget. And your unassigned fund balance has increased since 2013 when it was $1.6 million or about 6% of the budget and that's a very positive trend because you're developing real substantial reserves, which will also help you, you know, with the credit rating agencies and to potentially improve your credit rating to possibly like a AAA rating along with other factors that the rating agencies look at. Your stabilization funds are included in the general fund in that balance that I just mentioned. Your general stabilization fund totaled $2.5 million. That also has steadily increased since 2013 when it was $1 million. So that's another positive trend there that you're setting money aside for unforeseen and unexpected things as well as, you know, planned things that might come up. Your zoning stabilization totaled $230,000. That was consistent with the prior year. And you also have a vehicle equipment stabilization fund. That totaled $1.2 million, which was about a $250,000 increase from the prior year. Real estate and personal property tax collections continue to be strong at about 98% of the commitment, which is a great collection rate. As far as your budgetary results are concerned, your general fund fund balance increased by $872,000 and that was mainly due to a revenue surplus of $966,000. And that was really related to motor vehicle excise tax, tax liens and to governmental revenues. Your expenditures also came in $1.4 million under budget and that was mainly related to general government expenses, education and employee benefits. And so those two things increased your fund balance. And then you also had some things that decreased it. You used $858,000 of free cash to balance the FY '21 budget and your encumbrance has also decreased by $522,000. But those budget results are very good budget results. To us, that indicates that you have a sound and structured, a sound budget process and good budgetary controls in place. Your enterprise funds, sewer fund balance totaled $1.6 million. That was about a $227,000 increase from the prior year. That's on the budgetary basis of accounting, which is how you maintain your books and it's just looking at the operating fund. So if you looked at the financial statements, that's a GAAP basis, includes fixed assets, you know, your OPEB liability, your pension liability, so all your long-term liabilities that you do not budget for. Similarly, with the solid waste recycling fund, your fund balance was $134,000 at the end of the year. That was about a $123,000 increase from the prior year. And your cable TV enterprise fund, fund balance totaled $857,000 and that was about a $107,000 increase from the prior year. So you built up your reserves a little bit in all of those funds. You had positive results and your rates and your fees covered your costs and then some. Next thing is the other post-employment benefits liability. And the Town contributed an additional $111,000 to the OPEB trust fund in 2021. The fund balance at the end of the year was $589,000. You had a very good return on investment during the year. It was a good year for investments. You had about a 24% return and earned about $104,000 of investment income in that fund, which was great. Your net OPEB liability totaled $65.6 million. That was about a $9.8 million increase from the prior year. That increase is mainly just due to changes in assumptions and those are things that, you know, the discount rate, which is subject to how well your trust fund is funded and whether or not you're able to pay for the benefits of your active employees. So the actuary takes a look at it, at what your balance is and basically what you have to pay out over time. And depending on what your balance is, you can qualify for a higher discount rate. Basically, if you're not funding, you start with the AA municipal bond rate, which is like a risk-free rate and that changes every year, just as the market changes. And so the risk-free rate was 2.18% and your discount rate was 2.75%. So you got credit for having money in your trust fund. If you didn't have any money in your trust fund, you would have been at the 2.18%. So you're, basically, we call that a blended discount rate. And a 1% change in the discount rate gives a pretty significant impact on your liability. So the more you fund, the better your discount rate is going to be in the future going forward. And you're still slightly less than 1% funded on the OPEB trust, so you have a ways to go. The net pension liability, the Town is a member of the Worcester Regional Retirement System for people that don't qualify to be in the mass teachers retirement system. So teachers and certain administrators do qualify for the mass teachers retirement system and that their pensions are paid for by the Commonwealth. But the others that are in the Worcester Regional, your liability associated with that is $19.8 million. That's a slight decrease from the prior year. The Worcester Retirement System is about 50% funded and that was up 3% from the prior year. And they're using a 7.5% discount rate on the retirement system. And so that is actually a little bit high when you compare it to other retirement systems in the Commonwealth. And I wouldn't be surprised to see it come down more over time. It went from 7.65% down to 7.5% and the State Retirement Commission is really pushing to drive those rates down lower because they just feel that that's a little bit too aggressive. Capital assets, general government capital assets totaled $96.9 million. You added about $4.3 million to your investments in capital assets. $1.3 million was for paving. $1.6 was for a new fire engine and ladder truck. And $387,000 was for a DPW fuel tank. So you had considerable investments in your fixed assets and your infrastructure. Sewer fixed assets totaled $10.1 million and there were no current year additions that were capitalized. As far as debt goes, you had $610,000 of short-term debt outstanding. That was to fund the capital plan and a land purchase. And for long-term debt, you didn't issue any new long-term debt during the year. For your governmental activities, you had $37.6 million outstanding. And for your sewer activities, you had $4.5 million outstanding. Your general fund debt service is at about 8.6% or roughly 9% of your total appropriations. And over the past eight years, you were as low as 6.8% and as high as 10.6%. So you're kind of in the middle of that range. And that takes me to the report on federal awards. So there's three reports that you received. I just went over the financial statements. The report on federal awards, for any, this is required for any municipality that expends more than $750,000 a year in federal funds. The Town expended $1.9 million. Of that, $338,000 related to school lunch. $702,000 related to the coronavirus relief fund grant. That was your largest federal expenditure related to COVID, obviously. And then some more COVID money related to the Ed stabilization fund grant. That was about $200,000. And then another $663,000 on other educational grants. We had to test the special education cluster and the coronavirus relief fund grants as major programs. And so we have to go through a process to determine which grants we need to look at each year based on the level of expenditures, the risk and, you know, when the last time was that they were audited. So those are the ones that came up. After completing all of our procedures, we were able to issue unmodified opinions on the compliance with the program requirements. So we didn't have any issues related to compliance with the grant requirements. No deficiencies were noted in internal controls and we had no current year findings or questioned costs. So it was a clean report, a clean audit, best results you can get related to the federal awards. And the last report is the management letter and there are just four outstanding comments in the management letter, which are prior year comments that have been there and they're being worked on. There's been some significant progress. One relates to old outstanding checks and there was a lot of progress made on that in 2021 and there was a lot of progress made on that in 2020. The balance at the end of '20 was $61,000. That is now down to $9,000. And you really want to try to, you know, keep that number low because it, that's, there's a risk to having old outstanding checks on your outstanding checklist just from an internal control standpoint. And so we always make that recommendation and the, so the last piece that's really open on this is that we're recommending that a formal policy be established so that there are guidelines for the Treasurer to follow in terms of contacting the person that the check was issued to to try to, you know, see if, you know, it was lost and it needs to be reissued. And then there's also a process where you move it to something called a tailings account. And once it goes into the tailings account, it comes off the outstanding checklist, which is a more secure place to keep it. And then once it's in the tailings account, which is actually the next comment, then you can go through a process to advertise and then if they don't get claimed, you can actually bring them back in as miscellaneous revenue to the Town. And so for the, moving on to that tailings comment, we're also recommending that a formal policy be established there with, you know, aging milestones and basically guidelines for when that process should be started to start advertising and going through that process to take those funds back into miscellaneous revenue if they're not claimed. There was also a comment related to uncollectible ambulance receivables. The ambulance receivable balance at the end of the year totaled $622,000 and $552,000 of that was over 180 days old. And so I know that the Town has been working on this and it's a tedious process to go through all of these accounts, but there has been some considerable progress made and I know that that's actually something that you're going to be talking about tonight is establishing a policy related to that so that there's some guidelines in place going forward about reviewing this and trying to, you know, deal with the uncollectible accounts on a timely basis. And then the last comment relates to conducting a fraud risk assessment. So this is a comment that we had put in all of our clients' management letters at some point in time and really what it is, is taking a look at the different areas in the Town where cash is collected or where there is machinery and equipment and considering the risks associated with, you know, someone being able to, you know, take these items and, you know, having proper controls in place to safeguard these things. And it's really kind of a cost-benefit analysis to say, you know, these are the controls that we have in place, you know, and saying, okay, what's the risk here? Is it high, medium or low? And are we comfortable with the controls that we have in place or should we maybe consider putting some additional controls in place? And so I would have to say that the majority of our clients, and it's probably like 90%, I can only think of a handful that have maybe done this themselves. Most of them have hired like an outside consultant to come in and do it. And then, you know, maybe on a go-forward basis, they might, you know, they've got the template now, so thinking that they'll possibly start doing it themselves or maybe they'll continue to periodically have that third party come in as needed. And so those are the comments that are in the management letter and those were things that I wanted to mention to you. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to take them.
Yeah. Yes. I just want to go, since it was the last, kind of one of the last things you mentioned about the checks and the tailings. We recently, I thought, approved a policy. I know that you're looking at fiscal year '21. Did you have the chance to look at that policy as it will apply to future years?
I'm not sure if I've seen that policy.
We just approved it on May 3rd.
Okay, no, I don't think I've seen that yet.
All right. And to the Board, any questions coming from the Board?
I have one question. First of all, thank you as always for the thorough job you do. And I might as well take this opportunity too to thank our Town Manager, our Finance Director, Tax Collector and Treasurer for their outstanding job that's reflected by their teams in this report. So my one question, I know this, the last letter, the management letter, it's been dwindling, which is good. And I guess out of curiosity, does anybody ever get nothing? Like do you ever have no comments on anything? That there's nothing for them to address?
It's happened. I mean, if, there are certain things that we're required to put in writing and then there's other things that we put in because we feel that it adds value and there are things that come to our attention that we want to communicate to you because we think it'll help you to improve. And that's really what these comments are. There's nothing in here that we consider to be a significant deficiency or a material weakness. Those are the things that we're required to put in writing. And so we do have some clients that don't have any management letter comments at all. And it really comes down to some extent to what you want. And some of our clients, if it's not a material weakness or a significant deficiency, they don't want to have a management letter. And, you know, other clients like to get that feedback. And so, you know, if you told me that you didn't want a management letter unless you had significant deficiencies and material weaknesses, we would still communicate the things to you that we find. We would, just wouldn't put them in this report.
That's not what I'm asking.
No, okay.
I mean, it seems kind of counterproductive to say, well, I don't want to know these, so don't tell me these. That's like going to the doctor and saying that you don't want to know what they find. So I was just interested because I have the benefit of seeing these for the last 16, 18 years.
Yep.
So I know how to look at them and I know that this used to be, I mean, at one point, I guess, at the height, maybe there was like 12 items or 13 items. And now we're down to four and I know one of them, as the Chair just said, we've addressed the tailings policy, which hopefully fits what your company would think would be appropriate. And so we've done, well, I just want people to know out there that getting these, I kind of ask something like this every year, so that people who are listening understand that this is a really excellent report. And I know that none of the people who were part of the reason why it's an excellent report get up on any, you know, with any megaphone and say that. So I want them, the people of the Town, to know that this is all because of incredibly sound financial policy and institution of those policies throughout Town Hall and throughout the Town, that that happens.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely a very positive reflection on the Town and the operations, the financial operations of the Town that there are no current year comments in there and like you said, there have been, there were numerous comments years ago and those things have been fixed or addressed. And so yes, there was nothing new that came to our attention that was worthy of being put in the management letter in our opinion. And so, yeah, that is a very positive reflection on the Town and the work that's being done. Yep.
Thank you for those questions, Mr. Lonzo, and for those responses. So of the four things that are noted, my takeaways here are the outstanding checks, which I thought we addressed in part in the tailings policy, but I'll just verify that. And then the main thing here for us, because I think we've already taken care of the tailings, is a fraud risk assessment. And you noted that your recommendation or that you've observed that most communities hire an outside consultant to do that kind of work. Is that your recommendation as well?
I don't think it's a bad idea to have like an independent party come in and do it and have that independent look. And also I think that a lot of communities have gone in that direction just from a resource allocation standpoint. allocation standpoint. It's just, they don't have the extra staff or the extra time to necessarily be able to do it in the normal working hours. So, yeah, I think it probably does make sense.
Okay. I mean, it probably is helpful just because to have a disinterested party do the assessment.
Yeah, that independent look. And I can give a name of someone that I see out there that does a lot of them, and you can check and see if that person is available.
Yeah, that'd be helpful if you communicate that back to the town manager's office.
Actually, I have given a name previously.
Oh, okay.
And we did look into getting a proposal. It was approximately $10,000 at that time. We've got a proposal, so I had sought a grant through our insurance company, but it wasn't eligible. So it's something we'd have to fund.
$10,000 to get a proposal?
I'd have to get a new proposal to update that. At that time, the cost was $10,000.
Got it, okay.
To do the work.
To do the work.
Not to get the proposal.
So I was like, 10 grand to get a proposal?
The wording was, yeah, the wording was a little awkward.
All right. Thank you for that. And then as you were looking through our policies, and I know I think I asked this question last year, but I'll ask it again, it's New Year. As you look through our policies, I'm sure you see many policies from numerous communities. Did you see opportunities that stood out to you for improvement?
To be honest with you, we're not really assessing your policies from that standpoint. We, as a best practice in the state, like the Department of Revenue also, as a best practice, recommend that you have written financial policies. But as far as establishing the policies and guidelines, there's a lot of things that are town-specific that go into that. And so it's kind of hard to compare you to another town because there's a lot of things that are unique to Lunenburg. I mean, we could certainly look at them and tell you if we saw something that looked really unreasonable. But for the most part, if you have financial policies and you've gone through a process to establish them and they seem to be working for you, it's really kind of a subjective thing to each town. There's a lot of guidelines out there to help you, things to consider when you're developing these policies. And I think that the town actually considered a lot of that information that was out there when it was developing the policies. I mean, I haven't seen anything offhand that looked unreasonable to me for the policies that I've looked at.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much for that. I don't have any additional questions to you, to the town manager.
Thank you to Powers and Sullivan.
My pleasure.
And thank you to the finance director and treasurer collector and the whole finance team. We have an excellent staff, so that's reflection in this report.
Thank you.
Choose for AAA next year.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Really easy for you this year, Ben, so thank you as well. All right, so for our 7:30 appointment this evening, we have a meeting with our finance director and our fire chief to present an ambulance abatement, collection, and hardship policy. Are we able to share this policy on Zoom for the people at home?
You want me? I was talking to them, I didn't hear you.
That's okay.
You're more on the financial end of it than I am.
I didn't hear the question because I was saying goodbye to the auditor, so.
Oh, there was no question, Karen.
The question was, can we share the proposed policy with the people at home?
Oh, absolutely.
On our screen.
You have it, Heather?
Yes.
Electronically, so they can see it. This is your turf more than mine.
Didn't you rehearse?
Operational side, not the building side.
It's up on the screen.
Thank you. All right, and so now we have Karen Brouche, our finance director, and Chief Sullivan, the fire chief, presenting the ambulance abatement, collection, and hardship policy.
So do you want us to read the policy?
I don't think you have to read it.
Okay.
I think if it's on the screen and Heather slowly scrolls, then the people at home can read it. But if you can just give us kind of the overview and the highlight of why this is being presented to us this evening.
Well, basically, based on what Mr. Saretti just said about the FY '21 audit and the finding in the management letter, there, the ambulance receivable is about $600,000, and there's a large portion of that that has been outstanding for a long period of time. So at least in the auditor's opinion, they would consider a large portion of that receivable balance to be uncollectible. So what this procedure will do for the town is it will establish a written policy whereby we can collect those aging receivables, or if need be, we would go through our third-party billing company and write off amounts that are deemed to be uncollectible, so that we have a realistic receivable balance and not a large receivable balance that has probably 50% that we don't think we would ever collect.
And I think this may be helpful for us to have an open kind of discussion among the board, so if anyone has any questions, just feel free to ask Karen or Chief Sullivan.
I guess, you know, from our end, a lot of this was going on. The part that wasn't happening was it wasn't being written off at a final point. This was going to the billing agency, was going out to collection. But correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, it was more of a technical issue that it wasn't being officially written off to show on the balance.
Right.
At a certain point. We were looking back at, like, okay, geez, it's been four or five years, and apparently it's more they want.
Right.
Shorter timeframe.
And we did have a meeting with Coastal, who is the third-party agency that we use. And based on the conversations that we had with them, it was determined that a large portion of the receivable that they're showing as outstanding has been sent to, the company is called First Financial, and they are the actual people that go through the collection of these older receivables. So we need to determine with Coastal's assistance what that number is, and that would be the number that hopefully soon we would come to the select board and ask that you write off that receivable so that it can be taken out of that receivable balance. And that doesn't mean that we stop collecting it, it just means that it's no longer in the receivable balance, and any money that we receive from First Financial would just come in as a local receipt and not get posted to a receivable. It would just come in as revenue.
More of an actuarial function.
Right, well, yes.
Before, we were looking at them on an annual basis. This would take it to a quarterly basis on assessing these ones that are going out past 180 days.
And I think, but I think upfront, we have a little bit of work to do with Coastal in order to determine that number that has been out for collection for a long period of time where there's been no activity, because that would be the dollar amount that we would be looking to write off of the receivable, even though at, I mean, I don't know when they cut it off and say, we're not going to collect this anymore. But we would still make every attempt to collect that revenue. Like I said, it would just be a reduction of the receivable on the balance sheet to a more realistic number that we actually expect to see.
Mr. Alonso.
So is this a new policy or is this a modification of an existing policy?
It's a new policy. What the policy states has been done, we just didn't have a formal written policy in place.
And that was the issue with the auditors, it was not in writing.
Correct, yep.
So, short of reading it, which we don't want, can you give an overview of just basically some of the basic parts of this and how it'll be reviewed so that people will know?
Let's see.
So you don't have to, the purpose is clear, you made that clear, the background is clear. So what are the basic, can you summarize the procedures?
So basically, we get a, monthly, we get a statement from the billing company. After a certain point, after making attempts to collect, they go out to the collection agency that they've tried to track down, make sure we have all the proper billing info, that we have right addresses, things like that. They make multiple attempts to contact the people, and we've had no contact from them at all. Then it goes out to collection. Basically, if I understand it right, quarterly, ones that have gone out past 180 days, we're looking to remove off the list, per se. And it would still be with the collection agency. But that's in a nutshell of narrowing that down. The second part of this is a hardship policy, which we've also had for quite some time, and it's just wrapping that into this, that people can show financially that they cannot absorb this and that they meet standards for the poverty level, HUD standards, that we have a process to abate those bills for someone that can show a legitimate hardship, which, again, we've had that right along, sort of combining that into this policy as well.
Any other questions from any members of the board?
So I had sent you a question earlier today about how they collect their fees because they weren't allowing you to use a credit card or any sort of card. It could be HSA card or anything like that. So some people might have a hard time paying with just cash or a check. But you told me that, did you look into it? Are they collecting?
No, we definitely, you can now pay by.
That was corrected, right? Because that was in the winter, this winter, that was, you just couldn't. And they told me that was a town, that was on the town end.
It was on the town end, but it has been set up through the treasurer's office so that credit cards are now, credit card payments are now accepted.
That was lost somewhere in the shuffle. That wasn't, where that ever came from, that we said we couldn't do that, nobody knows.
Okay.
And that, when that came up, it was corrected.
Okay, because I think that some people will be able to pay more with a credit card as opposed to, they might not have an extra $800 cash laying around, but want to pay their bill.
Absolutely, yeah. They should be able to do that now.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Now, was this, one more. So did this come up just synchronicously with the audit report? Because this was on it, or did you know?
This was a question in the audit report.
Well, and it's been on our management letter for a number of years.
Good timing if you did, so, to choose tonight to do this.
There's one more of those lists on the list.
Well, it's good because I think of the four things that are in the management letter, three of them will be gone in FY '22, so it'll just be the fraud risk assessment.
It's got to be the fiscal audit, yeah, fiscal risk.
Yeah, fraud risk.
Also, when we receive the management letter, we review it with the relative staff to try to see what we can address to resolve that.
No, that's clearly been.
But that's why it was timed.
And that was FY '21, too. So, and there's been a lot of progress made in FY '22 that they'll pick up in the FY '22 audit, and three of those four comments should be gone.
No, I know that the whole financial team, it's very clear that you've addressed and you've paid close attention to that management letter, and that's excellent. So, because like I said, I've seen it go dwindle away, which is excellent.
Thank you.
And I don't want to get to the point where, no, we don't want a management letter, which seems to be the most crazy thing to do. Yeah, I don't want you to tell me what we're doing.
No, I wouldn't want, I would not want to have, whether it's a material weakness or whatever the case may be, I think it's a good idea to have the independent eyes looking and commenting so that we can improve our processes.
Totally agree. My question is about property owners. Property owners with equity. So do you have, do you get requests for abatement from property owners?
Property owners?
Yes.
Not for ambulance billing.
Okay.
Ambulance bills go to the patient, not necessarily to the property. The exception would be car accidents, it often goes to the vehicle's insurance, but I don't think we see any from a property owner.
I guess what I'm, I think you're answering my question, but what I'm asking is, my, well, let me express my concern. My concern is that we should not abate anything for people who own property and have equity in their property, that there's other ways to capture that money, right, other than abating it. So my question then is, are we getting abatement requests from owner, property owners in town, people who own property who say, hey, I'm having this hardship, I fall within 200 times the poverty level? So if the answer's no, it's no.
I couldn't say that 100% no, but I don't believe so.
Okay, so the target here really is our non-property owners, people passing through town who happen to get in accidents or.
Even accidents, usually somebody that's indigent, close to indigent.
Okay.
You know, that's usually where it's often occurring.
Got it.
We don't, we see, what, maybe a handful a year?
Yeah, for hardships.
For 900-something, some odd ambulance calls, we see, a year, we see maybe not even a half a dozen.
Okay, got it. Okay, that's it, that's all I had.
Are we looking for taking a vote today on this?
Yes, if the board's comfortable with that.
I am comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, let me get to my motion sheet here.
I would make a motion that we approve the ambulance abatement, collection, and hardship policy as presented by the finance director and the fire chief this evening.
Second.
All right. Is there any additional discussion on this motion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, no. All right, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
In effect.
We are looking pretty good. So interviews, appointments, reappointments, and resignations. So we can start with the town manager's appointment of a heavy equipment operator, Keith Babin.
All right, thank you. So as the board is aware, we've had a few vacancies in the, for the heavy equipment operator position at the DPW, so this will fill one of the three vacancies. This individual is Keith Babin. He worked for a family business doing land tree design and landscaping. He has his CDL, has done snowpiling and all the heavy equipment operation work when he worked for his family business. I met with him, he has a great personality, I think he's going to fit in very well down at the DPW, and he's excited to come on board.
Abandon landscaping, does a lot of work, is he from Pepperell?
Yes.
Any?
I've seen his name.
Yep, I've done some projects with me as well, some pretty big projects, so. Any questions regarding Mr. Babin? No? Did we receive, as a matter of process, did we receive the official letter recommending appointment?
No, that is now on the agenda as far as the person being recommended for appointment.
Got it, okay. Is there a motion on this request before?
I move to ratify the appointment of heavy equipment operator, Keith Babin.
Second.
Any other discussion? As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, no. Motion passes, the ayes have it, four to zero.
All right, thank you.
You are welcome. We also have a rescission of an appointment of full-time police officer Joel Ortega, and return of Officer Ortega to a reserve officer status. There's no action for us to take on this, and we do have a letter from the chief of the, excuse me, from Chief Gamble, chief of the police department, just noting that this was a request from Officer Ortega. We also have the town manager's appointment to American with Disabilities Commission, and I believe this is your appointment without our ratification. Am I correcting that?
Correct.
So this is more informative?
Yes.
Okay.
Carolyn Rossi, she was, has served on the committee. I think most of the board knows who Carolyn is. She's been to a number of different meetings, especially when we were doing the complete streets. So I'm happy that she's joined or asked to be reappointed to this position. She's a great member for the committee.
Excellent.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to thank Ms. Rossi as well for coming forward, and I hope that we have more active commission this year because I think that there's a lot of good information that they can bring forward. You know, we did a lot with the complete streets and the ADA compliance with the sidewalks, and I think there's more to be done. And we had the walks back with the complete streets down in Whalen, and I think that should be an area to focus on. So I really hope that the American with Disabilities Commission is more active than it has been.
They will be. We will be. They will be. We will be receiving a more complete report from Montezet Regional Planning Commission on our ADA self-evaluation. So that identifies all the different projects in the town buildings and where we need to comply with, and we'll need to go through a prioritization of those projects. So we'll be working with the committee, commission on that.
All right. So last, we have our appointment to the APDC, and I just want to refer to the town manager. Uh, I will show you this though, because I, I mentioned this before, that on iPad, you really can't access any of that stuff when you're using Safari. So when you go to the town website on Safari, all those are just not available.
Okay.
It's only Safari.
Well, we'll be switching our website base in this coming year, so highlight that problem. Uh, so I'll just read from the bylaw for the composition for the APDC. The Board of Selectmen shall appoint a five-member APDC to oversee the APD pursuant to this bylaw. Initially, two members shall be appointed for one year, two for two years, and one for three years. Each successive appointment shall be made for three years. The Board of Selectmen may also appoint up to two alternate members, initially for terms of one, two, and three years, and for three-year terms thereafter. If members are absent, unable, or, or unable to act, or recused from voting due to a conflict of interest, the APDC chair may designate one or both of the alternate members to serve in their place. To the extent achievable, the APDC shall comprise the following persons. A member of the Lunenburg Historical Commission, a design professional, a crafts person, or building contractor familiar with historic restoration, and one resident of the APD, and one resident at large. Members and alternates of the APDC shall reason, by reason of experience and/or education, have demonstratable knowledge, interests, and ability to effectively carry out the APDC's responsibilities.
Okay. So then that clarifies then what we were saying earlier, that is a member of the Historical Commission that's being appointed to the APDC, and we have to do the appointment. Got it. And that was a little backwards in how I understood it, so thank you for the-
No, no, well, it's also not the way I, I, I said, I think we had to refer to it, because typically, you know, committees like, commissions like this, since they're, they don't usually just recommend certain membership, they usually require membership, like the capital planning requires a person from the planning board, a person from the finance committee, et cetera, et cetera, and those bodies choose that representative. Here, they're just saying, to the best possible ability, we should appoint somebody from the Historical Commission, but it's not a requirement.
It's not a representative.
Right, it's not a representative of the Historical Commission, so. Anyway, it's kind of oddly written, you know. As, I mean, not odd, it's not oddly written, it's, it's out of the typical manner that other commissions and bodies have been formed, that's all. So anyway, we get to our point.
All right. My only question to the town manager is the year of why this is only a, a two-year appointment instead of a three-year appointment? Or is that a typo?
I think it coincides with the, Elaine went back-
Got it.
To do all the appointments, you know, and when they were supposed to expire.
Okay.
So it coincides with the schedule as far as alternating-
Yes.
Appointments.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we have a request for, uh, this is our last appointment for the year for our annual appointments for Mr. McGrath. He was appointed to the APDC for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion on this matter?
I would move that we appoint Richard McGrath to be a member of the APDC with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to appoint Mr. McGrath. Any additional discussions?
I want to thank him for his time already served on the Historical Commission and the APDC. And while there has been some to-do in the past, or conflict on certain things, I, I want to say publicly that I think he does an excellent job. He comes with a wealth of experience in this, in this field. He has the best interest of the APD in mind, as well as the town. And I think he has certainly earned the right to continue on this commission.
Good.
Ms. Chair, I'd also like to concur with Mr. Alonso. I think Mr. McGrath has acquitted himself very well this year. He's had a few tense meetings, and he, I think he's handled it very well and agree, he does a great job and really puts a lot of effort. You can see the effort that he puts into the APDC, and I wholeheartedly support him.
Okay. All right, as many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. All right, the ayes have it. And Mr. McGrath is reappointed to a term on the APDC to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. We are doing pretty good on time. I said eight o'clock was our workshop time, so. To the town manager for the town manager's report.
All right, I'll start with the announcement of existing vacancies. There is one vacancy on the agricultural commission, one person recommended by the open space committee vacancy on the economic development committee, one vacancy for the finance committee, two associate vacancies for green communities committee, one vacancy for the historical commission, and one associate vacancy for the zoning board of appeals. Anyone interested in serving on any of these boards can go on the town website, fill out an application form, and submit it back to the select board's office through Elaine Peterson, or contact the office at nine seven eight, five eight two, four one three zero, extension one four four, and if you have any questions on those opportunities as well. Current employment opportunities, there are vacancies for the following positions. Two library assistant positions, which are part-time, non-benefited positions. Two heavy equipment operator positions, which are full-time, benefitted positions. A meal site manager, which is a part-time, non-benefited position. Production technician for public access, which is a part-time, benefitted position. Van driver for the council on aging, which is a part-time, non-benefited position. And videographers for public access, which are part-time, non-benefited positions. Information on those positions can be found on the job postings on the website under employment opportunities. Update on pavement management plan. The DPW director and I met with an engineering firm that commonly does pavement management plans to discuss updating our plan. We requested a proposal that would use LiDAR, which is light detection and ranging technology, that would provide an updated evaluation of all our pavement. And this process would also capture our traffic signs, sidewalks, and reveals. And this is a GIS-based platform that would integrate with our GIS mapping software as well.
That's a great way to go.
That sounded from the different alternatives, and the DPW director agreed that that's the most preferred method. You get the most bang for your buck with that as well, and it's the best technology there.
Very odd that this would come up because, totally as an aside, we are, on our book club, we are reading a book where they're using this, it's a nonfiction book, where they're using LiDAR, which I'd never heard of until this week, to scan jungles in Central America, to look at archaeological things, to cut through the, you know, the, the cover of, of the vegetation. And here I am now, it's looking at those, so it's pretty funny.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, I'm sure you're reading it, how many cool things are you finding in Central and South America, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lost City of the Monkey God, by the way, for those who are interested. That's what it's called, The Lost City of the Monkey God. Just plug, I figured I'd plug. I don't know the author, Doug Preston, but I figured I'd just plug it, so.
That's my pseudonym, so, thanks for the world.
All right. Um, the Flat Hill Road Drainage Study Proposal. We received a proposal from Brian Marchetti of McCarty Engineering regarding the Flat Hill Road Drainage Study project, which is on the fiscal twenty-three capital plan. And after review by myself, the DPW director, and the land use director, we felt it did not fully cover the scope of what was being asked, so asked him to go back and revise it to come back with more comprehensive approach for the, that project. So when we do receive that revised proposal, we'll let the board know.
Would you mind sending an update on that to Ms. Whalen and Mr. Allison?
Yes, yeah.
And to Ms. Sroka, Selectwoman Sroka. Ms. Whalen and Mr. Allison are the two homeowners that are the most affected by this on Flat Hill.
And there's a video onsite we did.
Yeah, I know.
Sightwalk that we did, if you want to, just-
Look at it, yeah. Next update, two sixty-five Pleasant Street pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. The principal assessor and I have been meeting with Nugent, who is the owner of property at two sixty-five Pleasant Street, about a payment in lieu of tax agreement for the solar personal property equipment at that site. The town voted to authorize the select board to enter a pilot agreement at a previous town meeting, and we have been reviewing what their proposal is. And there's some, um, we're just trying to figure out the terms as far as the valuation method, and so once we fail a fair agreement on that, we'll bring it to the board on the valuation method.
I have a question on this one.
Mm-hmm.
I, maybe my address here is wrong, but hasn't this been in place for a while?
Yes.
Like, over like six years?
It's two thousand thirteen, yes.
So typically pilot agreements for the first like ten years of a project.
Correct.
So why are they approaching us now?
So it was approached with our previous company that did our principal assessing, or we outsourced principal assessing previously. And over time, it just got lost in transitions through that stuff. So I think there was also maybe discrepancy on the valuation approach as well.
So what have, so what have they been paying now?
They've been paying personal property taxes on that property. And that will, I believe, come into play when we come up with a payment term on the agreement.
Why would we stop taking their taxes and go to a lower tax structure for an existing system if we don't have to do that?
They are appealing the personal property taxes that they have paid through the Atelit Tax Board, so that is yet to be heard at the Atelit, Atelit Tax Board level.
And? I have more questions.
They believe they're exempt.
Why would they be exempt?
Well, that's because it's an unknown, that's why most solar farms look for pilots. Because it's undecided, undetermined by the courts yet whether the personal property tax is an appropriate tax of those facilities.
And there's also in the law, if the property or the credits are going to a business, that's another tax-paying business, that they would be exempt. So it's unclear, and the questions to ask if, because they do have off-takers that these are going to, whether these businesses are in Lunenburgs. That's a requirement of the law.
So to clean it up, it would seem to be possibly in everybody's best interest, but obviously this deal, if they have an, if they have an appeal, I would say publicly that, as we're negotiating something for a pilot, which I'm not, in, on its face, I'm not against, depending on what the amount is. On the people that we've offered it to, we've taken what we thought would be the equivalent personal property tax and amortized it, made it even payments over whatever that ten years or so would be. I'm willing to entertain that, but at this point in the process, I want to make sure that they're doing that and incorporates what they've paid already, and they drop. It's got to be, including dropping the appeal.
Are we incurring costs related to their, their appeal?
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
No, because it would be covered through town council, and who we pay retainer. He'll, he would represent us at that appeals hearing.
Okay. I have more questions, so my, my wills are spinning. When you said a retainer, like usually after so many hours, you start cutting away at your retainer, and then you hit.
No, we play a fat, flat fee monthly.
Yeah, so, and it covers so much.
Right.
Okay. Um, that's interesting. I mean, I think on the surface, for me, I mean, I'm, you know, okay. I can't wait to hear more information.
Update on the trash and recycling coordinator position. Due to the lack of applicants for the grant-funded position of trash and recycling coordinator, I sought proposals from consultants that take on these, will take on these same tasks of improving the town's solid waste and recycling program. I received only one proposal from Supportive Business Alternatives, a Lunenburg company owned by Jamie Toll. And the goal is to improve our processes surrounding the trash and recycling program, develop and distribute educational materials in our programs, work with the school on education programs regarding recycling, improve the service between the town, its vendor, and the residents. The project kickoff would be in June and is expected to be complete by January of two thousand twenty-three.
Excellent.
COVID nineteen rapid test kits from the state. This week, they, the Baker-Pleito administration will begin distributing over two million free COVID nineteen rapid test kits for towns to distribute to residents. Each municipality will determine how to distribute tests to the residents. And in Lunenburg, the Board of Health will be taking the lead in the distribution of these. And once I know all the locations and how people can receive kits, then I'll announce that at our meetings as well and advertise that. Municipal aggregation mailing, this is just a heads up for residents that Colonial Power, our energy broker for the municipal aggregation program, will be sending out a basic service mailing on Wednesday, June fifteenth. This mailing will be sent to anyone in Lunenburg who is on the basic service plan but hasn't already been mailed consumer notification letters. So those are residents who are new to town. The mailing informs residents about the town's program, shows them the savings over basic service, and allows them a thirty-day opt-out period before being automatically enrolled. I'm going to include an update regarding the LED streetlights. I have a meeting tomorrow with the council from MTC, our, our town council, their office, Liz Leiden, and the council from Unitil. We, as I previously announced, we had settled on the purchase price, but our council has been trying to settle the other terms of the agreement that there's been, uh, they haven't agreed on certain language terms. So tomorrow's meeting, we'll try to hash out those terms to bring to the board. I, and I just want to make it clear that on behalf of MTC, it hasn't been on, on their side, that they've been very proactive about reaching out to Unitil about non-response on, on items.
I think we know Unitil's not a fair broker.
Wow, newsflash.
Yeah. They just keep proving it, doubling down on that.
Update on meetings, events, and other announcements. Just an announcement that was put out through the townwide emailless service as well, that the town, town buildings will be closed Monday, June twentieth, in observance of the Juneteenth holiday. Also, the Lunenburg Farmers Market will be now from, every Sunday until September twenty-fifth. And the band concerts are on July eleventh, July eighteenth, July twenty-fifth, August first, August eighth, and a rain date for any of those dates have canceled on August fifteenth. And that again is at the TCP, on the front lawn in the front of the building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And in addition, I'll just add a, additional comment, that during Farmers Market, as announced last week, that the Historical Society will also be open, and I had the opportunity to visit them for the first time this Sunday. I thought it was really amazing.
Yeah, it is actually amazing.
So I encourage anyone coming to the Farmers Market to check that out as well. And thank you for the town manager's report.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, and as, as we finish the town manager's prize, I just want to make a, a comment here that, you know, I've only been chair now, this is my second, second meeting, and so I think Heather and I have been communicating, even though I thought we communicated a lot before, but I feel like I've moved into your office, no, not really. I haven't, I haven't really been here, but no, I feel like you and I have been communicating a lot lately. So I just want to publicly say, and, you know, I know that when you say nice things about people after a certain period of time, it's like, is this even true anymore? You know, you say it too much. But I really want to just acknowledge the hard work that, that you do, Heather, for the town. I know that I'm not always the easiest person to get along with. I have a lot of ideas and thoughts about a lot of things, and so, but really, you know- And so, but really, you know, the work that you're doing really is phenomenal. So I just want to publicly acknowledge that.
Thank you.
So thank you. Thank you for making this transition for me easier.
I'm here to support every one of you, like in any way I can.
So thank you. All right. For our current business tonight, I want to save our discussion and amendment of liquor licenses for the end and go straight to our workshop. So that way, we can spin our mental energy there and come back to that if we need to. So the idea tonight, if we have a workshop, we can, is everyone comfortable taking it up here instead of moving to the lower tables?
Sure.
Yes. Okay. So the workshop tonight is to review our fiscal year twenty-two select board goals. And then also, it's to discuss fiscal year twenty-three goals. And then also fiscal year twenty-three town manager goals. So we can take the town manager goals last if we were to work first.
Okay, I thought you were going to put me first.
No, we can take the town manager goals last in case you choose to modify anything based on what we say. But we, I think we've all had the chance to take a look at them. All right. So we already did a review, somewhat of a review of the fiscal year twenty-two goals previously. And so I, I think tonight might be a little quicker to go through them. In the drive, if you're looking for them, I believe it's, it's, was it April meeting? Let me just double check the.
There's a copy of it.
I, yeah.
Oh, thank you. I, I didn't see that, because I went looking for them when I printed them out earlier. Excellent. So we have our, we have the goals for, for fiscal year twenty-two. All right. And would it be appropriate to share these on the screen? So our first objective was to continue to pursue a project acceptable to the town regarding the property and building at the old primary school site, which is a continuation of last year's select board goal, objective one, with additional actions. So the actions for this were to engage via the RFP process approved at the two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting with a landscape architecture firm to discuss the vision of a multi-use, open space, green space project at the site, to invite the APDC to participate in this kickoff meeting and potentially subsequent meetings, to evaluate the potential of incorporating some aspects of the current building in order to address, including and memorialize its historic value. The second action was, at an appropriate time during the process, to advertise and hold public hearings in order to present the current working plan at the time and to get feedback and guidance from the public regarding the project. The third action, Heather, would you mind enlarging that just a little bit? The third action was to work with the landscape architectural firm to develop an article for the proposed project at the site to be presented at the two thousand twenty-two annual town meeting or some later town meeting for a vote, including all estimated costs, plans, timelines, and necessary funding. And the fourth action was, in preparation for a town meeting vote on the project, to prepare for any and all permits required to achieve the project. So I will stop for a discussion on how we think we did with these actions. Do we think we achieved action number one?
I think we achieved all of them. Unfortunately.
Yep.
The town meeting did not believe we achieved all of them, or was not interested in that we achieved all. I don't know what word or what phrase to use. But certainly as one member, I think we did everything on here, so I don't know that it needs to be a goal. But as one member of the board, I intend on working to try to get the design money that was removed from this year's annual town meeting and try to get a separate article on the special town meeting and have it re-discussed and re-debated, other than just getting that money removed.
My only comment, special town meeting voting threshold for funding articles is sixty-seven percent. And this failed, didn't achieve fifty percent at annual town meeting. So it's a higher threshold going into special town meeting.
That doesn't mean he shouldn't.
No.
That's fine with me.
Okay. Any other reflections on this goal?
Well, it's, the goal is accomplished, but there's still a lot more work to do. I'd also, I know that the money was appropriated to prepare the demolition plans and prepare for demolition. I think we still have some work to do to oversee that and push completion of that demolition in a time and manner. So that should be, you know, a separate article either. I imagine probably at the next annual town meeting to have ready funding for demolition.
Yes.
Google Docs, I can't enlarge it.
Okay, thank you. I agree with what's been said so far on the, that the actions have been achieved. I also think we need to kind of regroup and come back to the town with some forward-thinking action. I would urge maybe the spring though, but I do think that I'm, I'm open to really anything, so long as we have progress. All right. Objective number two. So I, I just made a note that when we start talking about fiscal year twenty-three, to transfer some of that over. Well, not some of the, the objective kind of portion, not the actions. Objective number two was to work with the town manager and finance director to establish a means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption or abatement. I think we went into this knowing that this is likely going to be a multi-year goal. And so, action number one was to discuss the authority allowing us to pursue this program, evaluate examples of how other towns have already adopted similar programs. Action number two, to discuss and determine the eligibility criteria for seniors to be able to qualify and participate in the program. Action number three was to work with the town manager and finance director to create financial models and illustrate, and illustrations to allow the select board to weigh options and to fine-tune any proposal at a minimum. These illustrations should include what the exemption and or abatement would, would be to the eligible seniors and what the impact would be on all other taxpayers. Action number four, to hold public hearings when necessary, but at least one, to present the proposal and get feedback from the public. And action number five, to prepare a town meeting warrant article when ready detailing the final proposal for town consideration. How do we think, well, how do we think we did on this?
As a member of the two-person, the two members of the select board, myself and Mr. Franco, along with town manager and the finance director and our principal assessor, we have achieved, I believe, number one, and number two, and are at number three. We are somewhere in the middle of number three.
Okay.
And with all, with the other remaining two actions in our, in our sights, that that's what we know we have to address next.
Okay. All right.
And I know Mr. Franco would agree with me if he was here.
Unfortunately, he's in, he's in Vegas, I think. Develop a policy, so objective number three, our third goal, was to develop a policy designed to encourage volunteerism in town, especially with regard to town boards, committees, and commissions. The policy should aim to determine how to improve existing methods, what new methods might be tried, and how obstacles might be removed to garner more active involvement from the public. Input from all current municipal body members and the public at large should be actively pursued. And how do we think we did on objective number three?
Do you have a policy?
No.
Okay, then.
So I don't think we made, I don't think we made much progress in this.
Well, if I may, this is more of a editorial than, I guess, it relates to this directly. Because when we asked, when we brought this up, there was a lack of ideas that somebody had, because everybody's like, well, we've been trying all these different things, and I don't know what else we're going to try. So I think we put it on as a policy, and I guess we'd have to review the meetings and the televised meetings about what the discussion was at the time. But I would encourage the current select board to avoid such large umbrella things that are hard to define and even harder to implement. Yeah, so. This was a feel-good thing, and I understand where it was coming from, from, from the heart and the positive place of trying to get people involved. But it's, it's not like, oh, hire a landscape architect, have them do this. I mean, there's nothing that you're going to have, and even if you had a policy, not necessarily any expectation that you would actually encourage more people, even if you had the best ideas. I mean, volunteerism is a tough thing to come by, and it seems to be, I don't know if it's getting harder, but it hasn't gotten better, let's put it that way. Maybe it's pretty stable.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I, I told the town manager this, and I'll share it with you guys as well. So the other, I think all of you know that I'm not a social media person, although apparently I've like gone asleep on Facebook and it neuralized, I was like logged in for hours. So it looks like I've been on it quite a bit lately. But I'm not, you know, I have Facebook. I really don't utilize it too much. And I, and I definitely don't read a lot of what's in the, the group, the local chat rooms, because I think, I just don't read it. So maybe a couple of weeks ago, I happened to log in and I saw something. And it was a comment about trash pickup. And someone was complaining, because I guess their, their trash bins got knocked over by someone. And, and they made a suggestion, which I thought was normal, reasonable, that, you know, that this is straightforward. We need to have a conversation with our trash vendor and talk to them about this, yada, yada. And, and in the comments, you know, someone made a comment that, oh, I've reached out to the town manager's office and talked to elected officials, what have you. And then it's like, you know, they're not, they're not doing anything in, in the comment. And it was something along the lines of, you know, perhaps they just don't care. Right? And so I read this, and I was tempted to respond. And so I started responding, and I did, I started writing a response. And I, I got like seventy-five percent of the way through my response, and then I stopped, and I deleted it and said no. Because anyone who wants to be informed is informed, right? And I don't, and I don't mean that callously, but we're all having the same issues with trash. Like, no one person is, is specific. We're all kind of going through the same thing. You know, we're all aware of what's going on. And I think we've communicated adequately all the efforts, the fact that they have executives in their trucks doing all this work, you know, trying to get this out there. The point of me saying all this is sometimes, you know, we're not here to get any pats in the back, but sometimes it does feel as though, like, how many times can you say the same thing over and over again to someone who's just going to walk away with, they just don't care? Like, we're all putting in all this time and energy because we just don't care, right? So sometimes, I don't know. I don't know what you say to that person, to say to them, do you know how much time is being committed on your behalf? Like, maybe you should contribute. I, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know what we say. I don't know what we do. And I know I'm part of the problem in terms of not making any progress on this objective, because I just, I don't have an answer when there's a lot of expectations but a lack of willingness to be part of a solution.
I, I don't think that you can design a policy around volunteerism. This is not something that you, you go and say, oh, look, we got to reflect on this policy to encourage volunteerism. People are either going to volunteer or they're not. And also, I think they are misled and think that certain boards and committees get paid.
Oh, they do.
Okay, they're, yes. When I was on the school committee, people thought I was paid.
People told me they pay my salary.
Yeah, okay. This is a volunteer position, and I think that sometimes it's lost. They think that people get a paycheck for it. So they think, that's why they think they have the right to say that, we don't care, you don't care, because you're getting paid. Or in their minds, they think that. But I don't think that volunteerism is a, something that you can create a policy for. Policies are for enforcement. So if somebody does something or something comes up, you can refer to a policy. I don't think, I don't know how you capture volunteerism in a policy.
Right. And that's my point.
Right, right.
My point is that you need to have, you know, goals of this type, it's kind of like when you review, if you have employees that you review,
Right.
that you have employee goals.
Right.
They need to be achievable by some, some tangible metric. And, you know, I guess the goal of this could be, well, do you, did you get more volunteers?
Right, right, right.
But I mean, how, how am I supposed to get more volunteers? Because I think you, you said it perfectly, which is if anybody who's out there who wants to volunteer is probably volunteering. Maybe not for the town, maybe for other organizations.
For whatever, yeah.
And there's a lot of time.
Yeah.
So I just think we should avoid goals like this.
Yeah.
I think we should remove it.
Yeah. All right. So let's start talking about fiscal year twenty-three. So I think where we're landing is that we achieved objective number one. There's more work to do. That objective number two is still in progress. And then objective number three is something that we need to carry forward. So let's, if we can go for the easy one here.
Objective number three is something we're going to.
No, I'm sorry. Objective number three is something that we're not.
I know, I was like, wait, didn't we just say that it's not achievable?
Objective number three is something that we're deleting, we're not going to continue.
It's unachievable.
Yeah, unachievable. So the easy one here is objective number two, in the sense that I think we're all in agreement that this is going to continue over to the new year.
Objective two, yes.
The, there, there's some minor wordsmithing to be done, I think, on the first and second actions as they've already been completed. We might, I can, I can rework that verbiage just to add in that, to note that's already occurred, and then list the follow-up actions, three, four, and five. Do you see, Mr. Alonso, any additional actions that would be beneficial here?
For that objective?
Yeah.
No, I think the ones that are remaining are the next ones. It's really, we're up to the point of crafting a sample policy or, or program. Yeah, act, yes, because it's going to be special legislation. So we're going to be crafting that, getting ready for presenting it to the select board, and then to the public at large, and then bringing it to town meeting. So that is the progression along the way.
Okay.
So I think we're, those remaining actions capture those.
Do you think under action number five, that, and where it says, prepare a town meeting warrant article when ready, that we can specify fiscal year two thousand twenty-three annual town meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think that's our goal, yes.
Okay. Excellent. All right. That's one goal. We did not receive any communications from any members of the public with recommendations for goals for us.
Really?
No. So. Objective number one, this was the Thirty School Street project. So how do we envision converting this into a, a goal for the new year? Right now, we have a capital plan that will happen, I think, without this being a goal. But we have a capital plan, funding to tear down the old primary school. So what more do we want to do in addition to what's already going to happen?
Oh, I think overseeing that, I think, as Mr. Dwyer said.
So, okay. So formulating that into a goal as a kind of an oversight on our part?
I also think that, I don't know if you want to put it in there, but like I said, I think resubmitting the design project or the request as a town meeting article for the design money to do the landscape architects project that we had several or a couple of public hearings about.
And surveys.
And, yes. Well, we had surveys at the beginning that led to that, but we had real plans.
Yeah.
And, and real energy behind the plan. So I guess one of the things we need to do that wasn't in the goal is, you know, we're going to have to really promote it. We're really going to have to sell it. I mean, I was, I don't know about anybody else on the board, but I was kind of caught on my heels because I never thought that, that money would not pass for the, the next phase of the design. Because the out, you know, the reaction to the public hearings was very positive, both publicly at the meetings and through emails and people's requests. So I think we have to maybe not be flat-footed and try to be more proactive in promoting the plan.
I was just going to comment, from the recent discussions of the municipal building design committee, it seems like the path that they're on is in conflict with this goal. So I think maybe engaging discussion with that committee. Because it wasn't one of the proposals to build a town hall on that site.
Correct. Yes. One of the, it's one of the key kind of plans that's coming out now is to look at that site for a future town hall. But I, I don't know if it's in conflict as much as it's an alternative vision. You know, I don't, I don't think we can commit a lot of funding to either one of these, to either that or this until one of them gets ironed out or squashed. But I think we can pursue going, I think we can keep going forward with this goal, in my opinion.
Well, we're going to be asking for considerable money for this, what I've just proposed, because that was like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or thereabouts. So for the design, to get the construction documents. So if there's a floated alternative where we're going to, you know, I just don't want to jump on the merry-go-round and go around this whole circle again.
Yep.
Well, from my perspective, reflecting on the last year, it seems that while everyone on the board last year was very enthusiastic about the proposal for Thirty School Street, turning that into a park, we were all, you know, behind it. At times, we can be, you know, in a little bit of an echo chamber because there's such limited public engagement during the process. Then we get to a town meeting that is relatively well-attended for a town meeting, and it gets squashed by, by a healthy margin. And I, I think kind of dovetailing with objective three, which was not achieved in any way, shape, or form, what we're really looking to do is to get more public engagement so we can be more effective. effective as a board when we make these decisions. And I think trying to think about strategies to, to increase, uh, participation at special town meeting and annual town meeting, uh, you know, if we can get, uh, good participation at special town meeting and sound some of these ideas, bring some of these ideas forward, that then can be, you know, then we'll have confidence going to annual town meeting with, with a proposal. And, and I think that needs to be thought about and, and ways that we can do that.
Okay. And anyone's, you know, for my own benefit, I have not gone to a town meeting for twenty years, um, meaning I haven't gone to twenty years of town meetings. And I wonder, because it seems as if it's, you know, one of the drawbacks of town meeting is that it seems almost too easy to vote no. And it seems a lot harder to get votes of yes. Have, have there been a lot of, other than a school project, has there been a lot of times, or that anyone can recall, in which we were able to really get like public support behind a project that, that we're asking the public to be in support of, that was not school-related?
Yeah, the library, the public safety building, uh, you know, renovations on buildings. I mean, so the whole capital plan had lots of, you know, lots of fixes from the vertex and the, uh, the other TAPES study. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think, I, I think, first of all, when, when we talk about town meeting, you have to understand that it matters who shows up. And sometimes different people show up because of articles that are there. And so you have a different diversity of, of resident and voter there from one, one special town, one meeting, town meeting to another, whether it's special or annual. So you, you can't really speak, and it always rubs me the wrong way when people speak about, well, town meeting, what it is. So like, you know, we have seventy-eight hundred or so voters and maybe a hundred and seventy-five people show up for a town meeting. You're getting a very small slice of a small slice of people and, you know, that's gonna be the way it goes forward, unfortunately. So what one town meeting does does not necessarily reflect what the next town meeting does, cause the makeup of that body could be completely different for a variety of reasons. Because it rained, so poor people had stuff timed to go. Or it was a beautiful day and other things were planned. You know, there's youth organizations, like Little League sometimes has stuff planned, so you don't get a lot of the parents. It's really hard to judge what you're gonna get.
I think my question was kinda wondering if we can look back at some of these successes and see what, what, what worked, what made them successful.
I mean, from, from my own perspective as a resident, whenever I'm looking at one of these, you know, you're looking at the perceived value to the town, cause we're asking, you know, uh, every, every person in this town to, you know, allot some of the money that they pay to these projects and whether they think it's valuable or not. Obviously, uh, schools is the classic example. Everyone wants good schools, so they tend to be in favor of making sure that the schools are, are, are well-funded. Um, but other nice deals when, you know, a park in a town that has several parks, many that are also have competing interests, uh, for, for upcoming projects, it can make it a, a little more muddy in terms of the perceived value.
Yeah. That's a good point. All right, um.
The one thing they all had in pro, every project that, that got voted in, almost without fail, had a, a coordinated, for lack of a better word, marketing effort. You have to get out in front of the people, you have to have it multiple times during the course of, you know, a year or a few months where you, you're, and you, you hit, you know, newspaper articles, you do maybe a, a PAC TV program about it, uh, you, you put it on social media. You have to get the word out there, so a lot of people can eat, and, and you'll get a lot of feedback from that before the vote, too. Cause if people start saying, you know what, I don't think this is gonna pass, you'll get a good feeling for that, instead of really going in blindly.
Okay. What are some of our, I'm gonna come back to this, but if we can just kinda brainstorm a little bit, ideas for, uh, another goal, unrelated to thirty School Street. Um, any ideas for another goal that we should work on for the upcoming fiscal year? So I, Mr., uh, I'll share Mr. Frankel's comments, since he's not with us tonight. I did ask him as well and, um, we find it, what he said was that, um, senior tax relief, I said, and presentable plan for thirty School Street demolition, uh, are the two things that jumped out to him and that he supported that town manager's plan for nine twenty-five mess up. Those were kinda his key inputs.
So, no third one?
None, totally the same.
So I had a policy thought, but let me see if I can find it. Yes, citizen awards. Uh, something I mentioned before, that I said I was gonna kinda work on and, uh, I have not picked up on any kinda substantive level, but the idea was some kind of, uh, to formalize some form of citizen award, that during the pandemic, you know, a lot of people really stepped out, stepped up and, and I think became really key in our community. It really stood out. Uh, and, but I think the, the concept is to have some kind of recognition program to acknowledge all the good work that happens around town. Um, you know, as an example, you know, I'll think about like Corinne, you know, who is doing so much work in so many different areas. Um, and like, you know, our, the town really needs people, and I'm pricing her name wrong instead of Corinne, uh, but the town really needs people like her. You know, that, that, you know, Easter egg hunt, you know, with the food pantry, like those kinds of things really go a far way in a lot of people's lives. And it's a non-governmental thing. And it's finding a way to acknowledge, other than, you know, the, the constant things that we bestow upon people, but some kind of formal recognition program for someone like that, who's giving so much, or, and there, and I'm naming one person, but there are many other people as well, who continuously give back to the community. And have, you know, even, even the people who volunteer on four and five boards and committees and have for the last twenty-five years, uh, to be able to acknowledge some of that, some of that work. So that's one, my, one thought of a goal is creating some form of citizen award.
Not against the concept, I'm not sure, to be, to just be honest, I'm not sure it rises to the level of a goal. It's certainly a program we could talk about and I'd be more than happy to talk about.
That's where we landed before, was not necessarily a goal, but.
So a chair, you could certainly put that as an agenda item and, you know, but, yeah, I don't know that it just gets to that level for me.
Any other thoughts? I'll pause. Todd, Todd looks so deep in thought right now.
Oh, no, I, 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 I tend to agree with Mr. Alonso. The, uh, I don't think it rises to the level of a goal. Um, whether it should be a war or maybe we do something, you know, more simple, like on a monthly basis, we just highlight one, uh, citizen volunteer, uh, at a, at a meeting or something like that and just, you know, go through and give a, give a little blurb every month of, you know, here's a volunteer who's been, you know, working for the town for, you know, twenty-plus years in a volunteer capacity and, you know, we just wanna highlight all the stuff that they've done, something like that. And it doesn't have to be, could be bimonthly, quarterly.
Or something like that.
Yep.
Cause I mean, we all know people who volunteered in this town for, for, you know, uh, tens of years and, and they don't get a lot of, uh, recognition.
Yeah. There are some members on the ZBA that I think are hitting forty.
Yeah.
I can't even imagine.
Yeah. Yeah, that, 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 that body has definite longevity. It's probably larger than, I mean, I think the, the previous chair was chair of that for a long time.
Yep.
So.
Uh, town manager.
I just had a thought that came up at this last town meeting was a full review of the bylaws that, uh, are all related to this left board.
Yeah.
It's a very action-oriented.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah. And it's in our official, it's in our official capacity, too, so.
All right. I like that, cause that's something that we had mentioned that we had, that we didn't take the time to do. Um, review our, the bylaws.
That's tangible.
It is.
Yeah, it is. We all like this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think so. All right. So, um, okay. So if we can just go back to thirty School Street for a second, how do we want to, um, what kind of actions, and I can put together some ideas and email them out for the next meeting, but what kind of actions are we thinking of, um, for the, for the new fiscal year? What we have so, so far, um, well, I don't, I don't have many. I have, I have, I understand the concept of what we're trying to do. Oversight of the thirty School Street demolition project, um, preparing for the future disposition, planning for the future disposition of the property. Um, promoting that plan to the public.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, just to make it clear, review and evaluate whether we'll resubmit the arc, the landscape architect's plan to another town meeting vote.
So do you?
So that way, we're not committed necessarily to, but at least we'll review it and we'll try to get as much input as we can from the public again before we go to it.
So, but Heather said the municipal design committee set, has, has a conflict, maybe? Do you think we should have a meeting with them, a joint meeting, to see where they are standing?
Here's their chair.
Oh, yeah. So what's going on there? Why are you in conflict?
Not, not yet.
Goal of ours.
So what, what will happen is once, once the municipal building design committee, we were, so where we're at in discussions is kinda just fleshing out, I'm sorry for scratching over here, I, I've, my goats touch poison ivy all the time. I'm not usually allergic to it. But, uh, so whatever reason it's bothering.
That's what happens when you get old.
Wow. I'm gonna reel back a little bit. Oh, my goodness. All right, you're making me lose my train of thought.
I'm sorry.
So with, so the, the last meeting was really more of a discussion about our thoughts about what to do.
Move forward, okay.
With all the, with how to move forward.
Okay.
A common thought was looking at the thirty School Street for a future, uh, location for a town hall.
Okay.
It is not a plan that we are pursuing, it is just something that we are discussing. So once, you know, part of our rules, new rules, that we're supposed to come up with multiple permutations, multiple options to present to the select board and then get feedback, so that way we can figure out which option to kinda hone in on and spend more time at. I expect that, uh, we will have those options to us toward the end of the summer. That's my expectation, that there will be.
So therefore, we'll have, be able to have a meeting with them at that point regarding this goal.
Right.
And potential conflict and overlap or potential not.
Yes, but not right away.
The, the takeaway that I had for why people, um, didn't vote for that or wanted to change it is because the Marshall Park thing came up afterwards, the redesign of Marshall Park. So they didn't feel the town needed to invest so much money in what they called a park. And I guess that's how it was presented as a park, even though it had a lot of other things, like parking lot.
Right.
They forgot the parking lot park. Um, so I think.
An athletics park.
Yeah, they focused.
Which is what Marshall Park is, is not the same.
Right, as a totally different kind of park. Um, some people won't even use Marshall Park.
Well, I, I, again, all I'm saying is the word park has a very broad meaning.
Right.
It means different things.
Yeah. And, and we, and no part in our discussion ever talked about it being a formal park park.
That's just how it was sold, I think.
But, yeah.
And the park was the fixation, the word that they focused on, park.
We'll come up with a, maybe our goal was come up with another.
Maybe we need a better word.
Yep, I'm making a note.
So at the last annual town meeting, if I'm not mistaken, and Heather, Heather, you can correct me if I am, but I believe the funds were authorized to move forward with the demolition plans.
Correct.
As well as projected monies for the demolition.
Yes.
Yes.
Given the rapid, uh, increase in prices that we've seen this year, that escalation, I think it would be, um, it wouldn't be surprising if we have to go back for an additional appropriation, either, well, likely at annual town meeting next year, uh, because I imagine we'll get through demolition plans and get those bid likely this fall. Does that seem reasonable?
That seems reasonable.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So that's one of the things we'll wanna be prepared for is, is a warrant article, uh, if additional, uh, funding is required for demolition to complete that.
Yep. Normally with capital plans, the oversight usually falls underneath the town manager, uh, not directly underneath us. But how, uh, to the town manager, how do you recommend that we can word this, so that way we are, um, doing this appropriately?
I'll have to give it a little more thought. I mean, maybe, um, request, um, weekly updates regarding, uh, the status of the demolition and hazardous materials being, on that project and a timeline, updated timeline. And that gives you oversight in a, in a, no, I guess, way.
Yeah. All right. I think that's three goals. Do we wanna talk about four?
No.
All right.
Four goals has never proven to be.
Or, or achievable.
Yeah, back to your last goal, I would just add on to what, um, Slough Woman Soroka said is, um, the perceived, uh, perception that you have competing park requests and funding, that, um, so maybe that be a piece of it, that identifying, making sure that it's known, the different funding sources for each. Um, partially, it's gonna be dependent on how the park commission proceeds with Marshall Park plan, whether it's gonna be done in phases or, you know, whether it be all done at once, cause that funding, um, schedule will change. But I think it's something you may wanna address in that discussion.
Yeah. And I, I do agree, thank you for that, Heather. I also just wanna, uh, agree with the comment about naming it something other than a park. I think that that is gonna be helpful, is that if we, if we formalized or creates kind of a working title for this, other than thirty School Street, um, park or project, that, that working title may be helpful. Yeah, I think that'd be really good. Okay.
Public gardens.
Public gardens, yes.
Works in Boston.
Arboretum.
Arboretum, there you go.
Public cultural, I don't know.
School Street Common.
There you go. All of these words, that's, these are the words we need.
All right. Okay. Um, do we, and then we also, another part of our workshop here is to discuss with the town manager, the town manager's thoughts on, uh, her goals for the next year.
All right, I'll start. Um, I've already touched on the nine twenty-five mess.
Policy to increase volunteerism. Let's see, let's see if one person can achieve it better than the other.
Didn't make the list. Um, so nine twenty-five, I would like to continue that as a goal, cause I really wanna see that project completion. Um, so the first action would be to work with, um, the EPA on the targeted brownfields assessment funding and then all the tasks that are gonna be associated with that. Right now, I don't have specifics, because we're gonna get the funding. And then, um, I know it'll probably involve working with the current landowner on access and all that, all those components. So that would be one action. Um, and the second related to that would be to identify the best method of disposition. So like I reported at the last meeting, um, for the one-year period of redemption would be up approximately next June, let's say. But making sure that we're, um, have all the steps in place of how we're gonna dispose of the property once we can, um, and whether that be through a auction, um, or through a bid process. So that would be the other one, that, making sure that's all lined up.
Yep. All right. Sounds good.
Second goal, um, associated with long-term planning and different, um, aspects of long-term planning. First, uh, capital planning to include an asset inventory list and expected date of replacement of all our vehicles, equipment, infrastructure, including rows, culverts, bridges, sidewalks, buildings and grounds in our capital planning documents. And utilize a platform that will create greater transparency, um, during the capital planning process for, um, people to, to review. Second, uh, would be long-term staffing plan, so to create a comprehensive long-term staffing plan, similar to what the school has laid out. Um, we've done it in, in pieces, um, police and fire, we've had formalized, um, staffing plans, five and ten-year plans. And, um, we're gonna have to reassess those as well going forward. Um, the fires were in the last year, the, their long-term plan. But looking at all our departments, um, we've had. our departments, um, we've had discussions about staffing and what it looks like in the future, but, um, I think creating a living document that we can, you know, redress every year and how we're going to fund those, obviously, um, it should be through the operating budget. And lastly, roads and bridges, working with the DPW director to update the pavement management plan and doing the same for our bridges, creating a, um, bridge, um, assessment plan, long-term plan, so that will identify all, um, all the engineering as well that we're going to need in those stages. So we always have a project in the queue and, um, any potential grant funding, because we've had a lot of our bridges, we've been able to cover through grant funds. So, and large culverts, that includes large culverts. And the last goal identified was employee recruitment, recognition and retention. And this would be to, the objective would be to establish new employee recruitment methods, create formal recognition plan for employees and strategies for retention. Uh, so municipalities aren't unique in the aspect that, um, recruitment right now is at an all-time low. It's really hard to recruit qualified candidates. Um, the recent conference that I went to, that was a hot topic, everyone was saying the same thing. They, um, the pool is very small, very limited qualified candidates, they have people not showing up for interviews, um, just no callbacks, um, competing against other communities, leveraging that, um, against other communities. So, um, some ideas for recruitment would be to, um, work regionally. So say we in the past had advertised for a position and we hired an applicant, maybe there were other qualified applicants in other communities looking for, so we're sharing, um, applicant pools and have to vet that out and making sure we're not, um, compromising any confidential information. But, um, that is, would be one strategy, is to work in a region. Also, marketing the postings differently, making a little more flashy advertising and trying to get better, um, greater pool of applicants that way. That may, you know, your standard application, you know, job posting doesn't look very, you know, um, appetizing, I guess, but, um, so making it a little more, uh, appeasing to the eye and, and wording it maybe a little differently and how we can, maybe someone who hasn't worked in municipal, how we can attract people, uh, to this career. And, um, third, to attended, attend college job fairs and explore an internship program with local colleges to attract candidates at that level. The second action would be, um, create a formal recognition plan, and this would be to recognize employees at different meetings, um, just highlighting, um, the actions. A lot of the time people don't know what individual employees do on a day-to-day basis, um, gets lost in the overall scheme of town government functions. So really highlighting that, and I think, um, employees would value that, just that appreciation factor. Also, to formalize an employee appreciation, appreciation event, we have done, um, uh, appreciation luncheons for staff, um, a few years, so just making that more of a regular, um, annual event and add that to give awards for years of service for employees, because, um, and hopefully we don't have all these people retiring at once, but we've had employees here for twenty, thirty, forty years, um, so we're really recognizing that. And even employees who have been, you know, a lot less than that, it's recognizing that and, um, valuing that they're staying with the town to be employed. And lastly, retention, uh, to make sure we're retaining those employees is survey department heads and staff on topics for trainings and conduct quarterly professional development training, uh, schedule, uh, to go along with that. So maybe topics that they think they need more, um, education on and training on, um, and getting that feedback of where that interest lies and working with department heads on, on that. And, uh, lastly, conducting an employee survey to assess job satisfaction and based on that, the results of that, create an action plan from there.
That last one I would say is very high. Because I see that in my own, in my own employment and everything, it's like, people won't, you, you can provide every avenue you want for somebody to, to talk to somebody, but if they have to put their name and face to it, you're never going to get how they really feel. You need to have blind surveys that are done by outside people or through mechanisms that cannot tie them to it, but that will promote honesty in how they feel about the role, so.
And I wouldn't want to, um, be the one conducting it, so this may require future funding at town meeting, so would want it to be an outside, um, party that did that, so.
Or funding within the existing, but I know we have a tight budget.
Yeah, we don't have that.
You're like, what, money?
Yeah.
Yeah, any comments on any of, uh, the town manager's goals?
Well, that last one is huge, that last one, not, not huge as far as its scope and the, and what it's trying to do, but it sounded like what she read, all of them. It sounds like a really long goal, so I hope it, that seems like a lot to bite off and chew in one year. So it sounds multi-year to me already.
I, I hope action three is sooner than later.
Yes, well, I, I concur with you, Mr. Chair. I concur with that.
Um, I, what, I really, Heather, um, I really appreciate these goals, uh, on so many levels. Um, you know, there's a lot that we hear that we can't impact and, um, and I think that, you know, this type of approach, it really is, is long-lasting. You know, once we, once we establish the culture, once you get it going of this kind of full circle culture of evaluation, that every employee has an opportunity to provide honest feedback and that it will be considered as part of changes, you know, that creates a better system. Any, in my own experience, anytime you can, you can get the feedback of the people who are at the lowest level doing the work and find ways to incorporate what they see into what's happening, everything is better. Uh, I've never seen a case where you're incorporating that feedback and you're worse for it. Uh, you're always better for it. And so I think that that's, that's a huge cultural shift. I know it's going to take some time on the staff part, the first few are going to be rough, um, are definitely going to be rough, but I think that that will get to a better point, and I really think that that's the way to go. One thing I also, I would just add, would suggest as an action on action number two is not just the annual employee recognition events, um, but also, you know, like this time of the year where you have, um, um, Cherry Hill Ice Cream that's open. You know, ice creams, kitty ice cream's five bucks, you know, with the tax. You know, like, if you think about how many employees we have, times five, you know, we're still talking pennies, not pennies, but you're not talking a lot of money. In the scheme of the budget, it's not a lot of money. So, you know, but that's one of those things that goes a long way, you know, and employees in the summertime having a, a little gift card to go to Cherry Hill supports the local business and it also, you know, rewards staff just for being staff. Or, you know, a little ten, fifteen dollars to go over to Conrad's, you know, supports local business and does the same thing. That, there, I think there are opportunities throughout the year, even, you know, even Christmas time, you know, maybe there's some kind of drawing and a couple of people get some certificates to go get a Christmas tree or whatever. Um, but like those, to me, those kinds of things really go a long way, especially to the, the staff that aren't the department heads, the ones that are, um, you know, the lowest paid union is a clerical union, and so, you know, those that are in the clerical union, especially, I think that would go really far and it just makes a big difference, so. And my little comment there is I had a boss that used to do that, I hated it, as a side comment, I definitely just, just liked it. Um, when I was happy, I was like, why do my, every month I get some cheesy little thing and a thing. But I was young, as I got a little older, looking back on it, it's something that I have always implemented, because I realized that it's not, it's really about making sure your employees know that you don't have to do great things for, to be acknowledged that you're part of the team, you know? And it's that little gesture, and I know that things happen, I know departments are already doing it, I know, I know it's happening in, in many levels, but those kind of formal gestures just go, in my opinion, a really long way in increasing satisfaction.
I'll say we had, um, pre-COVID, we were regularly having, um, holiday, uh, gatherings where we did potluck and, um, when I came up here, we started, brought what I brought from my last job, there's someone there, always did games, so we'd do Pictionary or, or music, uh, yeah, so it, I think everyone enjoyed it, at least I hope they did. But, um, it's just, and in the end, the winner got a little something, like scratch cards, but, um, to me that, you know, people would work on groups if it were like, um, uh, it really brought people together, I think in certain respects. So I'd like to see that continue, um, once we can get back to regular, and we're getting there, so, next Christmas.
You saying there was a time when there wasn't COVID? Can you sit us down and tell us about the pre-COVID days?
All right, well, I, I, any other comments on those goals?
No, I think they're all fabulous.
I think they're really great.
One, one comment on your idea for gift certificates to ice cream or something like that. Uh, anecdotally, uh, or, uh, the company I work at in the summer has an ice cream truck come to the office once a week for like eight weeks or something like that. And without fail, we have more people in the office on that day than any other day, you'd be amazed. It's like triple the amount, and even in COVID, you know, we, we, you know, tripled the amount of people we had in the office, uh, on that one particular day, um, so, yeah.
Well, at the fifty-fifth, uh, anniversary today, they had the ice cream truck.
Yeah.
So it even affects seniors, because they were very happy.
I think everyone had the ice cream truck today.
I'm sorry, I couldn't have lunch there, I, I, I wish I could have stayed.
All right, well, thank you, thank you, Heather, for those really thoughtful goals, and I, I think as you formulated those, those, really, really happy, so thank you. All right, so, um, going backwards in our, are we comfortable closing out our goal portion of this discussion? Um, going backwards in our agenda, we do have under current business, discussion and amendment of liquor license policy four point zero one, one point twenty-one applications and fees. Um, so this is something, uh, coming from the town manager recommendation on this, so would you mind just presenting this one to us?
Yes, so, um, we have an open liquor license available and the select board's policy addresses that in that scenario, it's advertised, uh, for a period of time, and, um, nowhere in the policy, though, does it state how those applications are reviewed and, uh, for a come business chosen for that liquor license.
That's if there's competing, right, if there's more than one?
Right.
Okay.
In that event.
Right.
So the request from, um, Elaine is, is to, for us to kind of formalize this, and she noted in her, in her letter that she sent out inquiries to any other communities to see how they handle this, has she gotten any responses back?
No, she got, she got one response saying, we don't have such a, a policy.
That's it?
So, yes, that was it.
We don't have, we don't have such issues.
Yes.
Ours are all taken, yeah. So it is rather unusual that we have an available liquor license, I mean, that's, or, you know, alcoholic beverage, that's not common, so.
Yeah, I mean, I remember when we inserted A, because before that we didn't have A, and there was a, a problem in town, or there was a, a disagreement, conflict, whatever you want to call it, that license was being given up and somebody asked about it and because of information they were given from the town, they didn't get the right information and so they didn't apply for it, somebody else applied for it. When it was heard, the initial person who inquired was like, I thought this wasn't available and so that it was this, and it was the only one. So we said, you know what, when it is the last one, when, when there are no other ones and one becomes free, you know, it has to be advertised, and that's why we did all that. We never had an issue with how we, uh, just like with interview people for appointments, if there's more people than there are slots, you interview them and that's it, and we, we get to decide how to do that, it's never been an issue. So although it's not formalized, and I'm not against formalizing it, it's just difficult to formalize every single thing you do.
Yeah, every single.
But I'm just saying why A came into being was for that particular reason.
Right, I mean, it could be as simple as first come, you know, the first complete application, because there's times when the office receives an application that's not fully complete, they're missing documents, so it could be as simple as that or, you said, an interview process. But it would be, I think, good for the applicants to know how they're going to be evaluated.
A little bird in my ear told me that Lou is excited about writing up a draft.
Oh, okay, good, because we're not going to do that right this second, right?
No, no.
Oh, okay, I was like.
So, so, yeah, I mean, I think we have to do.
Okay, I'm all for that.
For A, to, to incorporate A, what our normal policy is would be that it's come, first come, first completed, first served, but when it comes to A, because, you know, A's got to be its own separate thing, is that we're going to, any, any applications we receive for that scenario after the thirty days, because we're not even going to accept new applications till after it's advertised, that they'll be interviewed, or every applicant will be interviewed before the license is issued, whereas all other times, if there's multiple ones, it's just, okay, if there's more than one, so if somebody receives it, then you just, you get interviewed.
I, I'm down for that, but I, I also would be, uh, you know, I, I can, I hear what the request is, I think that we can take what you're saying and, and just put together a draft.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I will reach out to Lou and I'll ask Lou if he would, if he'll be so kind as to take a stab at, uh.
Has he volunteered or did I hear you just volunteering?
You're going to be volunteering.
Okay. All right.
I'll talk to him.
I thought you said he wanted to do a draft.
It was a little bird in my ear. It really did.
He made that up.
We're going to use his legal expertise.
Yes, we're going to tap into his legal expertise. We should patent how we do it. All right, let me just make the note.
You think he's watching?
No.
So that's what the Jeffries administration is going to be known for, you're not here, you got the job. You got the volunteer job.
Voluntold. All right, so, that, Lou, Lou, well, I'll check in with Lou now. All right. Any minutes for approval today?
I don't see any.
All right, warrants, we have an accounts payable warrant, uh, in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-three cents. And do we have any action items, uh, Heather?
Any committee report?
Uh, no, action items. Okay, action items for us, uh, typically these are where you make requests, things you'd like for.
Oh, well, I do based on my committee report.
Okay, well, then do you want to?
Can I do that?
Sure.
Can I do that? Okay.
Sure.
So I, it was a council on aging report that, that I went to the meeting today.
Yes.
In Lou, Lou.
Yes.
Because he was gone. So they were inquiring, because last meeting we, um, did appointments, and they were confused by the appointment process, because Mr. McQuiggin did not have to do an interview, and from what apparently the council on aging people typically get interviewed before they're appointed, even if there is no one else, um, who applied. So they wanted to, and they were trying to understand why Mr. McQuiggin was not interviewed when in the past people had been. For example.
By us or by them?
No.
Can you answer this?
Yeah.
Why, uh, so, the, the ones you voted last week were reappointments. He would be filling a vacancy, um, for a July first term, so, um, and Elaine had corresponded with the council on aging about this, that it would be on a future meeting, so it wasn't, wasn't intended to be at last week's meeting.
And we still appointed him, there's, so.
No, he was, he wasn't on the list of appointments last week.
No, they think he was.
They thought he was, but he was not.
Well, that's a different issue.
Okay. They did, they thought he was.
He knows that now, and the council on aging knows that now.
Was that after the council on aging meeting I had?
They thought he was appointed. They thought he was appointed.
They did?
Yep. And he actually went to the town clerk's office.
To get sworn in?
Nope, he was not on the list.
Are you sure?
Well, let's look.
Are you sure he wasn't on that list last week? I thought he might have been. Hold on, let me see if I have any notes.
Annual appointments. Annual.
He wasn't on the list.
But he wasn't on the list.
No, he was not on the list.
But they said his name was announced.
I don't remember it being announced.
I don't remember it being announced.
I somewhat do remember.
That's, so do I. And see, that's the thing.
Did we substitute him in for someone else?
For vacant position.
Because that, let me just.
Okay, hold on.
So we, we did do it. He, he was not on the list. He wasn't on the list, but we did have the email.
Right.
And so I went off the list for him.
Yes.
And I went on the email and he was appointed to a, to a term. Because I, and it was that one vacancy that we have down here to 2024. He was appointed.
The open vacancy.
Yes.
So they wondered why he didn't have to be interviewed. Because in the past, people have been interviewed. For instance, Mrs. Dwyer was interviewed, she said.
What?
She was interviewed.
Where did you go off the list?
We had, we had an, we had an email that also came in last.
Check the tape.
I'm going to have to review it.
I don't have an email that.
We did have an email with his applicant.
Yes. I was off the list except for, for him.
His volunteer form was on there and he was the last one. And so they, they're confused by the process.
Well, so clearly, we're confused by that.
That's not in the Google.
Okay, so there was that one.
If he was an appointment of a new person, he should not have been appointed without.
I, I think, I had the impression last week that he had gone through the process.
Right.
And that we were appointing him because he'd gone through that process and he had the endorsement of the chair.
He did not.
Now, I've also, I've also heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they don't have a problem with the appointment.
No, not at all.
They have a problem with the process.
Yeah, they're just questioning the process. They are perfectly fine with it. They also are perfectly fine with never having to interview for the job ever again.
New, new people, it has been the policy of the board that new people should appear before us.
Right.
Unless there is a real reason why they shouldn't.
Correct.
Okay? Like they can't, like they have to be able to say they can't do it.
Right.
Okay? If they can't come before us, that's one thing.
Right.
But otherwise, they should. And I didn't realize, I, again, I don't recognize the name. But if that was a new appointment, that's not good. Because my understanding is everybody we did last week was. Right.
Right. No, he was not. He was not here.
I didn't realize he was a new appointment.
Yes, okay. So I just, so maybe for future.
He, actually, today Elaine worked out that he was coming to next week's meeting.
Okay, so we're just going to, we'll talk to him.
Let's do it again.
I think he's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just reaffirm.
Then the, the other question they wanted to know, I guess, asked.
And I'll have, and I will say that I do, I did take Latin for five years with his wife, Kathleen McQuiggin.
Okay.
It was not because of that. Although he even noted it in his, on his council of aging form. I, I do know who Mr. McQuiggin is. But I thought it was just filling a vacancy, so that was an error on my part. So it was, it was my error.
Okay. So they'll watch this and they'll find out that you.
It was my mistake.
So the other question is, and I guess this happened, they asked this question at every council on aging.
Yes, the Rocks.
The Rocks. They want to know the status of the Rocks.
And.
And how far along we are in court and how, what's the den date? Is there an end in sight?
We are beyond that date. The Rocks were moved.
Yeah, they, I could see that was, because I went outside.
So the new DPW director has the survey plan that would, so he can go in the field and verify.
That they're still on.
If they're in the right of way or not.
Okay.
And if they are still in the right of way, then the town has the right now to remove them.
Now, okay. So when do you think he'll go and do that? For the next council on the aging meeting?
Yes.
When is that?
Do you think? Because that would be helpful.
When is their next meeting?
Yeah. It's the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
So that's like.
So in July.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, you guys watching?
I'll verify a date, but.
They're going to watch this. They're watching. Okay, thanks.
All right.
Those were the questions they had, and I told them I'd bring them up.
Well, thank you. I, I briefly talked to Mr. Lincoln about the Rocks, but it comes up every meeting.
Every meeting?
Yes.
From what I understand.
Very true.
What I was told.
Completely accurate.
Okay.
All right. Any other action items or committee reports we need?
Well, I, they did name their new chair. My chair, they're the same.
Okay.
Okay, they kept the same.
So they named the new ones, but they're not new.
They, they're not really new.
They retained, they retained.
It's Miss Jane Rabbit.
Jane, okay.
And then they had their big celebration today. They do have someone doing a tax workup, doing the weeding and flower planting.
Oh.
They do have someone there that's going to be starting. They have been having trouble with their landscaping company as well as, and I think we saw something similar.
The DPW directors on that.
Okay.
That same company is doing the, going at Marshall Park?
I'm pretty sure, yeah.
We're meeting with them today.
What else did they say? Oh, the kitchen, they have no contractors, so that project is stalled from the kitchen, the Capitol. Because people asked about that. And she's hoping to have the groundbreaking for the patio in the fall, because she's.
That's probably not.
Because she doesn't want it to be stalled like the kitchen.
The groundbreaking?
Yeah, that's what she said.
Oh, okay.
Groundbreaking, not that the project will be done, just that it will be started. And bids, at least bids will go out and such.
I think the council on aging director has been corresponding directly with the engineer on that.
Okay.
What's your realistic target on that? Are you getting products done this fall?
We have, yeah, a lot of bids just coming, obviously, with the number of capital projects and building projects, so.
Oh, wait, their next meeting, I'm going to fix it. The next meeting is July 19th because Sue is on vacation the second Tuesday. So you have even more time.
Extra week.
You have an extra week. Okay, they're raffling off Woo Socks tickets. You can go in there and get a raffle. That's the Friends of the Senior Center. So that's ongoing.
Well, so that was the, what the raffle was for today?
Yeah, today, but it's ongoing. So that, the game is on Sunday, August 7th against the Durham Bulls. So, yeah. Okay. I guess there was entertainment there today. Did you hear any singers?
Yeah, it was good.
It was good?
Yes.
The Sunshine Boys.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw them pull in, yeah. That's it. That's it. School committee is tomorrow.
Oh, I will be attending the school committee meeting tomorrow. I was asked to attend to discuss debt, essentially, projects. So I'll be reviewing what our current debt schedule is with them and our debt policy.
What project do you think they got lined up?
Turkey Hill, relative to Turkey Hill.
Okay.
Mr. Dwyer?
Stormwater Task Force is scheduled to meet on Thursday. We may shift that meeting a week. Just, the next meeting will likely be reorganization of the committee, so.
The committee report I have is that the finance committee appointment committee is going to meet next week before this meeting for the reappointments of the finance committee there, or any new appointments as well.
All right. I haven't attended any meetings since our last one. Library is meeting this coming Thursday. And I think I will have a meeting. No, I won't. So the library is meeting this coming Thursday. Next meeting of the municipal building design committee is going to be the last Monday of this month, which we scheduled it then only because of our next natural meeting would happen on July 5th, which we're not going to meet then. And that's it. That's all I have. Do you have any committee reports?
I do not.
Okay. Great. The time is now nine, 19-ish, our next meeting. As a reminder, we have, on this coming Thursday, from 5:30 to 7:00, we have the volunteer appreciation reception at the Eagle House, the senior center located across the street here from Town Hall. And our next meeting is going to be on June 21st. And it's a regular meeting. And we will have a workshop to discuss, or review, rather, our policies and procedures. This is Articles 1 and 2. So I would ask that if you haven't had the chance to read these, they are available on the, our website underneath the select board. And you can pull up all of our policies and procedures. And I would just encourage Articles 1 and 2, it covers multiple topics. And, and my intent on this really is somewhat of an orientation for our new member and that we will take some time to go through our policies and also refresh for all of us as well, just to remind ourselves what's in here, anything that we want to pull out and talk about in more detail. But I assume this will be kind of a rough review and kind of skimming through titles for the most part. So any public comments this evening from the public? Seeing none. Any public comments from the town manager this evening?
None.
Okay. And from the board?
I just have a question for Ms. Lemieux in regard to the library positions, the two part-time little clerks. Is that something like a high school student could fill?
Um, the.
I'm just not sure the hours is a, it's part-time.
Fridays. And I believe it was 2:00 to 6:00 P.M.
So maybe, maybe high schools do.
The page positions were kind of geared towards high schoolers, yes.
Are they?